The City of Riverbank Regular City Council and Local Development Authority Meeting is now in session. Today is the 240th birthday of the United States Marine Corps, November 10, 2015, and it is 6:00 PM. Please rise.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing.
Let us pray. Thank you Heavenly Father Jesus, thank you for this day that you provided for us. We thank you Heavenly Father Jesus for the minute blessings that you bestowed upon this city of Riverbank. We know Heavenly Father Jesus, you tell us in your word that if we'll humble ourselves and pray, that yes Heavenly Father Jesus, you look down and you'll heal our lands, and that's what we need Heavenly Father. We come to unite because you tell us also in your word that we have not because we ask not. Tonight Heavenly Father Jesus, we're asking for a special blessing upon this city council. There's important issues Heavenly Father that they have to take up. Things Heavenly Father Jesus could affect this city for a lot of years to come. And we just ask Heavenly Father that you give them wisdom, give them understanding Heavenly Father. We ask Heavenly Father that each person that walks forth to this platform tonight, that Heavenly Father Jesus, that you'll just give them a sense of peace. And Heavenly Father, they'll express themselves in a manner that would be becoming to you. We ask Heavenly Father Jesus that you will be with John Hurst's family. Tonight Heavenly Father Jesus, he's retiring after all the many years that he's given to this city, the many times that he's worked so hard Heavenly Father, the many nights that he's been out Heavenly Father when emergencies come around. And we just ask Heavenly Father that you bestow a special blessing upon him and his family. Be with him Heavenly Father, uplift him, give him strength, wisdom, and understanding. Tonight we ask for each and every one here that you bless him, walk with him. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Please be seated. Roll call please.
Consul Authority Member Janine Tucker.
Here.
Consul Authority Member Leanne Jones Cruz.
Here.
Consul Authority Member Cal Campbell.
Here.
Mayor Chair Richard, oh Vice Mayor Chair Darlene Barbara Martinez.
Here.
Mayor Chair Richard D. O'Brien.
Here.
Conflict of interest, any council or authority member or staff who has a direct conflict of interest on any scheduled agenda items to be considered is to declare their conflict at this time. Seeing none, we'll start with item 1.1, presentation and acknowledgement to Mr. John Hurst. Mr. John Hurst, Michelle Garcia, and Mr. Idell, would you please come up?
Hey Michelle. I'll let you start it off.
Okay. Hi John.
Hi there.
Hi all, I'm Michelle Garcia, Neighborhood Improvement Officer with the City of Riverbank. But more importantly, I'm the president of our City Municipal Employees Association. And with that, we donate parts, a portion of our paycheck to the association. And with our founding fathers such as John and other members, we've done wonderful things like sponsored Riverbank students in the past. We've sponsored Little League and different organizations and continue to do so. We have some, we're going to be sponsoring a family for Thanksgiving and also donating to foster care for Christmas and a family also. On behalf of the association, we'd like to thank John for his many years of service and, oh, sorry. Thank you. So you can face the audience.
Working.
Yeah, we want to thank John for his many years of service. You've been a great asset, not only to the city but also to our organization. And on behalf, we would like to present you with this.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Darren's going to give you a few words here.
No.
Kind of funny how it turned, I used my supervisor in parks and it turned on you.
Uh, John, could you come over here? I need you to turn camera.
Sure.
I messed up. Your wife kind of helped me get it going, so.
She did.
Yeah. Thanks, Zachary. So John came to the city as a young guy and was taught all the ins and outs of the city by Bill Lee, his former boss. This guy was a legend to John. John took all he was taught and input into his work ethic. He liked to keep busy and tease the young guys. The more he teased you, you knew that John liked you. And that's true. That's the guy's down the shop.
I must love you.
You tell me on a day-to-day basis. So John loves to joke around, play pranks on everybody. I think he was the master of pranks down at the yard, but nobody knew it was him that did it. And how he got out last is beyond me, I don't know, so. And John, on his time off, he loves his family, he liked good music, and Budweiser beer. I think the biggest thing I'm going to miss about John is the challenges he put me through, for one. He put me through some crazy challenges, pushmo River Cove Park, for one. Pushmo the top half of Castleburg Park, pushmo Jacob Myers Park, Weedy Hillside at River Cove Park. I could go on for days. He said it was something we could look back on and say, "We did that." It was a lot of fun, it's been a lot of fun. And I think the biggest challenge you have now is enjoy life and watch them grandbabies grow, so.
You bet.
So, all right, congratulations John.
Thank you.
John, on behalf of Public Works, we would like to present you first of all with this.
Cool.
Plaque, or standard, or whatever you'd like to call it.
Cool.
Secondly, a card with some.
Thank you.
Things in it.
Thank you very much.
And it won't blow up or anything like that.
Yeah, really. After what I put you through, it could blow.
All the information for that is in there, so.
Thank you very much.
And I'll give it to you before we get out of here. And then one other thing, which is a two-night stay with a dinner.
Wow. Thank you.
I would like to say a couple of quick words, is that, you know, I wasn't here very long. I've been here not quite four years, and John has been a mainstay here. He's been a mainstay in many things. He's been a mainstay of the street department and Public Works and the things that he does and the things that he teaches and how he's mentored over the many years. And I felt pretty good about it because I got teased a lot, so I knew John liked me. With that, I would like you to have a very nice and safe retirement and enjoy the grandkids.
Thank you very much.
Now finally, from the city. The City of Riverbank has great employees. Every one of them has contributed dearly to the city, and you have contributed for 38 years, from May 31, 1977 until October 30 of this year. Those are a lot, you saw a lot of growth.
Oh yeah.
And you saw a lot of retraction.
Right.
But, you know, I truly appreciate this, council truly appreciates this. So, to you John, in recognition of your valuable contributions to the City of Riverbank and to honor your 38 years of public service with the Riverbank Public Works Department, May 31, 77, October 30, 2015, thank you for your hard work and dedication, and it has the listing of the council.
Thank you very much.
And sir, I want to thank you very much. This is for your I love me wall, I hope you have one. Before we go take a short break and cut the cake, we're going to have John give a couple of words to us. And just a reminder, no more than five minutes.
Now, first thing I want to say is thank everybody. This is my family, really, I mean, for many years. And it's really been cool, it's been fun. Yeah, I got aggravated a few times. Who hasn't? But it's really been fun. I don't know, I'm not really a public speaker, but. But watching everybody, watching all the younger people come in, have their babies. I mean, it's really been cool to me, you know? I just want to say thank you, everybody.
All right, for now, we're going to take a quick recess to honor John with breaking cake. And please enjoy yourself, okay? Now who's in charge of the cake cutting? I'll bear it good.
No. This is a break recess.
We're reconvening the regular city council meeting with item 1.2, financial options for capital improvement projects.
Mayors members of the city council, this evening we have Craig Hill, Principal of NHA Advisors, to provide an overview of financing options available for major capital improvement projects, particularly relatable to the water meter project that the city is in the last stages of considering final approval of. And so we welcome Craig Hill this year this evening.
Welcome.
Good evening, good to see everybody again. I don't think this is going to be quite as exciting as the earlier speeches, so I'll apologize in advance. But one of the things that we would like to do tonight is just, for everybody's benefit, talk a little bit about the opportunities the city has or options that you have for paying for the water meter project that you've been working so hard on all year. We'll just quickly go through some of the background up till today. We'll talk through some of the options, who all needs to get involved depending on which option we decide to go down, and then what the process is. So really, as a quick recap of what you have been going through this year so far, you know, we're talking primarily about a water meter installation by National Meter Install of about 4.7 million. There is some anticipated reserves that the city has that they were going to apply. So what we're really talking about is trying to find a funding source for about $4.1 million, and the different options that you have for that. You've already gone through a rate increase. Had we had this conversation 12 months ago, you, the city would not have been in a position to take on or incur any debt to pay for the project through your water rate increases that were done by Bartle Wells, the rate study. There was actually built into the rate study some additional revenues that were going to be used for debt service or loan payments. So, we always approach this, we're agnostic to what type of a financing strategy the city decides to move forward on. So what we want to do is first, just give you a little bit of background on three primary ones that public agencies like yourself use. The first one is a bank loan. Second one is what we call a private placement, where you're actually selling bonds to one individual or one financial institution. And the third one is more of a traditional municipal offering where through an underwriter, you could have bonds that are owned by hundreds, if not thousands, of individual investors. Each one has a different approach, each one has a different kind of timeframe in terms of how long it takes to get done, as well as who needs to participate. So let's go through a little bit detail for each one. The first one, a bank loan, as you can imagine, you would get for a car, for a copier, for anything where you would literally walk into your local branch and you would ask them, "Would you lend us money to build or to install meters?" It's a relatively simple process, obviously. The good news is, or the pros are, that it requires very little outside consultant time or lawyer time, so the transaction costs are fairly minimal. Because you're using standard documents, they're typically the bank documents, it's a matter of just fine tuning terms and then executing on the documents. All of these, I'm going to back up for a second. All of these options are going to require council action at a future meeting. I think right now we're targeting your first meeting in December. So what we're talking through tonight is strictly just kind of the guts behind each of these options. There's no, if you pick one tonight, it's not that you won't see it again. We'll need to come back with paperwork. The downside to doing bank loans, they historically have had the highest interest rates because the bank is really doing its own credit review, and they tend to have the nominal high rate. And you're also using their standard documents. Sometimes it's hard to negotiate out some of the things that we do not believe need to be in those agreements. So your second option is what we call a private placement. And this is, the city's familiar with this. We did this last year for sewer. The city has done it for RDA and for some of the other financings over the years that we've been involved with. But it's basically a structure that you control, you write in your own terms into the financial documents, and then you simply go out and you solicit bids from financial institutions. It could be the same local banks, it could also be finance companies, anybody else who kind of likes to own tax-exempt municipal bonds. But it's a single investor, a single buyer. So you're truly negotiating with one person once you select who that institution is. It's a very competitive process. You know, we would put out literally a bid form like you would for a construction project, and we would expect to get anywhere between five and 10 proposals from different institutions. The benefits of doing it this way, the interest rates are much more competitive than a traditional bank loan. And it does require a little bit more in the transaction side, so you are incurring slightly higher transaction costs. The process is a little bit more complicated than the bank loan, so there is a more involvement of staff time as well as consultants. And then your third option is, and again, the city is familiar with this process, you're issuing municipal bonds. You hear about water bonds in the paper, you hear about sewer bonds, sewer revenue bonds. That's what option number three is. It does require, in this day and age with the SEC and the MSRB and some other regulatory agencies after the Great Recession, that there is a rating process, there's a disclosure process, there's a couple of different types of attorneys that are involved in the process. And the good news is, it really is the lowest interest rate you're going to see. The downside is, it's a lot of work to get there because you are representing and disclosing everything that you can about your water enterprise fund. And for that, you're getting a package that is being rated by a Standard &amp; Poor's or Moody's or a Fitch, and that's what the investors are relying on, is that, is it really that rating? So, lowest interest rate, highest transaction costs, probably also the longest time to get done. You know, we typically, if we're going through a public offering, are looking at eight to 10 weeks of work that needs to get done to get there. So how do they really compare? This is a shot at just giving you a hypothetical. If we were to bid these today, the rates may be slightly different. But just to give you an idea, given the size of the transaction we're talking about here, and again, you're looking to come up with $4.1 million for the water meter project, we would expect that if you did go to a bank and ask for a loan, you'd probably see a rate somewhere around 3.7%. So that sounds pretty low. Transaction costs are only $25,000 or so, and again, these are just estimates. But when you build that in, what we call the APR, you know, it gives you an effective rate of about 3.77. So, again, below 4%, little higher than 3.25. And the payments, just to put them into real dollar terms, is about $443,000 a year. That's what you would be paying for 15 years. Second option is where we go out and we bid it to a bunch of financial institutions, again, having one buyer. We think that you'd probably get a rate somewhere in the 3.40 range, slightly higher transaction costs, 75 versus 25. But notice that the all-in or the APR is 3.6%. So it's actually a lower all-in interest rate just because you're really starting from a nominal interest rate that's 30 basis points lower. You can see that the annual loan or the annual payment, debt service payments would be about $430,000, $31,000. So, right off the bat, it's saving about $12,000 a year to go to option two. Option three, public offering, water revenue bonds, rating, the full kit and caboodle. Good time to be in the market, probably 3% on the interest rate. Certainly the highest transaction cost, lots of lawyers involved, rating agencies that you would pay, underwriters. But you can see that the all-in APR is down at 3.35. So quite a difference. Again, a lot of work goes into getting that absolute low rate. But you can see that the annual payments are now $419,000. So, again, another savings of $12,000 a year. So, while these are hypothetical and they really do move around on a weekly basis, hopefully this gives you kind of an idea of what the different options are and what the impact really is on the water enterprise fund. Because again, this is a financing that's going to be secured by water rates and the water enterprise fund, not the general fund. So when council's taking the budgetary action each year, this is part of the water budget, not necessarily part of your general fund budget. We tried to depict the comparison here to give you a couple of parameters that you might want to think about as you go through these. But again, kind of left to right, loan, private placement, public issuance. The documentation, you don't really control it in the first option. You control it in the option two or option three. Timeframe, I think, is an important one we should think about. You could probably get the loan done by the end of the month, if you wanted to get it done here in November. The private placement could be done before Christmas. And if we want to go out and issue bonds, you'd probably be talking about doing that in January. We would do all the hard work up through December. Council will take action on the transaction in December. But we really wouldn't go out and try to lock in interest rates or sell the bonds until January. Staff time required might be a driver for you. Relatively low on option one. Moderate finance department work on option two. A lot of work from both the water department staff and finance staff and city attorney and city manager in under option three. That would be requiring rating presentations and things like that. Transaction costs I already discussed, kind of ranging from $25,000 on the short end up to $125,000 on the full bond issue. Obviously, lowest interest rate on the full bond, and we had given you some indicative rates on the other ones, so. Real quickly, just to kind of give you an idea of how the transaction costs go from 25 to 1.25, it's really a function of who all on this list is involved. Obviously, you as the city are under all three scenarios. Us as your advisor generally are managing all three of those. Little less on the loan side, but certainly involved to some capacity on all three. Bond counsel or legal counsel. City's used in the past, an attorney with a specialization in public finance to write documents or draft documents. That would be primarily for option two and three. There really wouldn't be a role for bond counsel under option one. Disclosure counsel, that's the lawyer writing the prospectus or the offering memorandum. And that's only if you went out and actually issued bonds to a bunch of investors, that option number three. Placement agent is really the bidding agent who goes out and talks to all the banks under option two. So if we decide we just want to go find one person to loan us money, then we would have a placement agent involved in that bidding process. Trustee, third-party bank, small role, only involved really in the last option. Rating agency, again, only involved in the option three. Financial institution or banks, again, that's if we're only looking at really borrowing the money from one person or one institution. And the investors, what we call them orphans and widows or individual retirement accounts, that would be only if you issued bonds under option three. So real quickly, this is kind of coming to the end, what is the process? Our recommendation to the city really is, understand your options. Let's ask any questions you may have tonight. Direct staff to maybe go with one option over any of the other ones based on the information you've heard tonight. And then we can start really putting together the bid package or the financing package. With the idea, again, coming back on December 8 with the financing, that you would, that would be your final say on, yes, we like the terms, yes, we like the financing structure, yes, we like the fact that we can get the money timely to start the construction or start the meter project. And if we approve it on the 8th, under a private placement or a direct loan, we would be able to close by December 17. be able to close by December 17th. If you want to go with a bond issue, we're talking about going into January. So I think that is really it. Happy to go back and go through any of these slides if there's specific questions to council.
My specific question is, what is our, what is the city rating on bonds right now with the default that we have on the LRA?
So the good news is that, as you're aware, the RDA was its own public entity, right? So the, those bonds, even with what went through, what happened on that particular issue, that did not affect the city. So your bonds, well, one, you don't have any debt for the water fund, and that's really what this credit is. So there really isn't a, if you were to go through option three, where we did actually issue water revenue bonds, I believe that you would be in the A-plus category for, now that you've approved a rate structure that is providing sufficient revenues to make the debt service payment. If you asked me this a year ago, I would have said you were probably in the triple B category. So the hard work that you went through to get the rating, the rate, the rate structure put in place for water has put you up into a good A-plus, A category for water revenue bonds. If that answers your question.
One more, since no one else is jumping in. We could be controlled by the state on the way we do our water if we don't act quickly. So I would not suggest that we be, we need to be frugal, but we also need to be expedient. So we're going to have probably a lot of talking about those issues coming on up. Our numbers aren't good again, so we're going to be in trouble.
Yeah, you know, it's a, I was talking to staff earlier about this, and we're having this conversation up and down the state. It's a crazy year with what's going on with water. And ironically, and this will seem kind of odd, I think, to all of you, is, as a finance expert, our concern is that everybody saves so much water that your revenues plummet, right? We have communities that we work in up and down the valley who have said, everybody's doing what they're supposed to do, they're not watering their plants, and we aren't getting the revenues we need and to meet our, you know, our budget. We thought with the conservation that we'd only see our revenues drop 10%, instead they've dropped 20. So obviously, from an, if you have debt outstanding, as an investor, you're concerned that there won't be enough money to make debt service payments. So on one hand, you have these state mandates where you need to make sure that you get the reductions that they want out of Sacramento. But from a financial perspective, you also want to make sure you have enough revenues that are coming in the door. I think in your case, your, the timing of your rate increase was perfect because in us, we went through your rate study, you know, they took that into consideration. So I hear your point about not meeting drought reduction numbers, but I think the revenues are the good side, on the good side.
What's the length of time for the three categories? 10 years, 15 years?
So the, your rate study assumed a 15-year amortization. What we would actually do, they were very conservative in their terms and their interest rate assumptions. You basically have about $430,000 kind of programmed into that rate. And we would, if the rate was so low that you could pay it off in 12 years, we would just, that's what we would do, right? We would just, we'll cram the loan into the term that it can, that your cash flow can afford, if that makes sense. But 15 is what's programmed in there right now.
Thank you very much. We'll see you later on, don't we, in another?
Yeah, I mean, unless there's any initial thoughts on which of the three options you're...
Well, I think we're going to need to discuss that when we discuss our water numbers.
Okay.
I'd like, I like option two, but I'd rather do option three because that saves us more over time. But the length of time prior to installation is a little concerning.
Right, okay.
Okay, thank you. And we don't make a decision during discussion of our presentations. Thank you. Item two, public comments. No action can be taken at this time. Members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda and within the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council LRA Board. Individual comments will be limited to a maximum of five minutes per person, and each person may speak once during this time. Time cannot be yielded to another person. Under state law, matters presented during public comment period cannot be discussed or acted upon. For record purposes, state your name and city of residence. Please make your comments directly to the city LRA Board. Do we have public comments tonight?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council and staff. My name is Ramon Bermejo from Riverbank on Deere Roselle Avenue. One thing that was brought to my attention by three or four people that don't like to come to city council meetings because they tell me that you don't do nothing about it, no matter how much I come and tell you about it. It's an alley that is by Carl Junior that is not taken care of. And it started on Sunday. Couple of them are workers in the area. A couple of them are residents that come often to those businesses. And they get discouraged because of the conditions that alley is. They're not called potholes anymore, they're called craters. And if something could be done about it, it would be very much appreciated. I had brought this before, like, two years ago, two years ago, but it is not upkeep, or that, I think it's not to go and cover the potholes and then leave it at that. It's going to be every year, at least every eight months, that you have to keep on it, keep on it. Because they don't put a base on it, they don't do the whole road, the whole alley. Of course, it's going to be in six, eight months, it's going to be all over like that all over. And so it's been over a year and a half, maybe two years, that that was taken care of. I have to bring also the matter about aquifers. A lot of us are not very much with the knowledge about aquifers. And I saw in the news with sadness that there were so many cars that went down in a sinkhole. Sinkholes, in general, are do to dry aquifers. Aquifers are usually used by the farmers. And I had come before the council and the staff to let you know, please keep the farmland. The little bit that we have left in Riverbank, please keep it. The little bit that we have in the county around Riverbank, please keep it. Those aquifers are necessary for the whole process of food. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any further public comment? Seeing none, we're moving to the consent calendar, consisting of item 3A, wave readings, item 3B. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Riverbank, California, adopting a Transportation Development Act, Local Transportation Fund, LTF, non-traffic claim for fiscal year 2015, 2016, other purposes, and amending the fiscal year 2015, 2016 budget for the City of Riverbank to conform to said claim. Do I have a recommendation, do I have any individual wishing to pull any of the consent items? Do I have any comments from the public on any of the consent items? Seeing none, bring it back to the council for a recommendation or action.
I can make a recommendation that we approve the consent calendar.
I second.
We have a motion to approve and a second, the consent calendar.
Councilmembers Campbell.
Yes.
Jones Cruz.
Yes.
Tucker.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Item 5.1, public hearing to consider a resolution of the City Council of the City of Riverbank, California, authorizing the submittal of outstanding abatement invoices to Stan Slough County to be collected as special assessments and liens on property tax bills.
Mayor members of the City Council, Mayor Sela Garcia will provide the overview of
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. Tonight, we bring to you the second step of the process with regards to outstanding abatement invoices. At the last City Council meeting, we did present to you a report which referred to two properties that currently had outstanding abatements associated with them with regards to weed abatement. The second step, after having notified the residents of that initial step, was to offer them an opportunity to protest the placement of those outstanding abatements on their property tax bills. And so at this point in time, the City Council has the option of opening the public hearing and allowing these residents an opportunity to protest. Should no protest be received, or should sufficient documentation be received to offer some sort of different method in which to repay this outstanding invoice, the City Council can then take action.
I open the public hearing. Are there any protests? Seeing none, I close the public hearing. And now I'm asking the council for a recommendation either to adopt or not adopt a resolution authorizing the submittal of outstanding abatement.
I'll make a motion that we adopt the motion.
I'll second.
We have a motion to adopt the resolution in a second.
Councilmembers Campbell.
Yes.
Jones Cruz.
Yes.
Tucker.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Item 5.2, consideration of a proposed resolution of the City Council of the City of Riverbank, California, approving variance number 01-2015 for KB Homes Central Valley, Inc.
Mayor members of the City Council, Donna Kenny, our planning and building manager, will provide an overview of this request for a variance related to the KB Homes being built at Crawford and Oakdale.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. As the city manager mentioned, this is a variance proposal to decrease a setback on Lot 99 from four feet to three feet. As you can see on the site plan, it's up in the top right corner where that setback And in this grouping of homes, it is Lot 99, just below what you see is Lot X. And you can see the other varied setbacks along that rear fence line of those houses. The other setbacks are four foot, five foot, excuse me, four foot, six foot, and eight foot. And this one would be the only one that is three foot. The development plan for this project and the building permit itself was approved with the three-foot setback, but the PD would require a four-foot setback, so it was overlooked during the process. And when KB Homes picked up the building permit and began processing or developing that site is when the three-foot setback was discovered. The general plan, let's see, this went before the Planning Commission, which did make a recommendation for you to approve this variance. And they had to base it on the following finding of facts, because there were special circumstances applicable to the property. Lot 99 is situated in the middle of the block, surrounded by other lots which are currently under construction. Therefore, it wasn't possible to do a lot line adjustment without causing another lot to become unconforming. The granting of the application is necessary for the preservation and enjoyment of substantial property rights. Without this approved variance, KB Homes would need to design a new floor plan that would fit on this lot, incurring additional expenses and the delayed construction and habitation of the surrounding homes. And the granting of such application will not, under circumstances of this particular case, materially affect adversely the health or safety of persons residing or working nearby. Since this roof projection at this setback would be less than three feet, the wall of the home would be at three feet, KB Homes will use a one-hour rated assembly on the other side of the roof projection as a fire safety feature. Environmentally, this is categorically exempt under Section 15305, minor alterations and land use limitations. And as I had mentioned, the Planning Commission did vote to approve, to have you approve the variance to decrease the setback on Lot 99 from four feet to three feet.
The Planning Commission recommendation is based on, is consistent with the staff recommendation made to the Planning Commission as well as our staff recommendation to you this evening, and that is to approve the variance for this. It is, it is minor, it would be considered de minimis in many cases, and we are recommending approval.
Thank you.
The only question I have has nothing to do with the setback, because I understand what happened. Is there a way that we could have this be reviewed and approved at staff level with going to the Planning Commission without it coming to us unless there is a disagreement?
I'm going to allow Donna and the city attorney to address, I believe it's legally required to have the council, but...
Then we'll proceed.
According to our code, currently it does. But in most of the cities that I've worked at, it came as far as the Planning Commission had stopped. So we would have to do an amendment to the code to change that.
And that'd be the next one we amend it. I'd like to seriously take a look at that, because we have, as I said, great staff, and we need to trust the staff in doing the correct thing.
Thank you.
Any questions on the variance? Is there anyone from the public with a question on the variance? Seeing none, I bring it back to the City Council for action.
I move that we approve variance number 12015 for KB Homes Central Valley Incorporated.
Second.
We have a motion to approve and a second on item 5.2.
Councilmembers Campbell.
Yes.
Jones Cruz.
Yes.
Tucker.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. Item 5.3, conduct the second public hearing to consider the proposed district boundary map options and to reduce the number of optional maps for further consideration.
Mayor members of the City Council, this is the continuation of a discussion that was begun at the October 24th meeting. We are conducting the second of three public hearings required under the law to consider district maps, so going from the at-large electoral system to the by-district. If the City Council wants to move forward with actually changing our electoral process from at-large to by-district, that would require two additional public hearings. So I just want to make it clear, there are two public hearing processes that we're dealing with. We're in the first section, which is selecting the map process. And again, this is the second of three public hearings required by law. And this time, we have Justin Levitt from National Demographics Corporation, who is our subject matter expert on this particular subject. And he'll be providing an overview of the information gathered through our many community meetings on district elections, as well as providing the analytical expertise that he has been offering the City of Riverbank.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson, and thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. Today, we are just going to kind of give you a brief summary of what we're hoping, where we are in the process, and what we're hoping to maybe start doing tonight, and an overview of what will happen over the next few weeks and months as we move toward the 2016 election. So you'll notice that some of the slides in this presentation have been reduced. I think we have the full presentation that we've been giving available online on the city's, just change what our city's website. The main thing we're doing is because of the California Voting Rights Act, this cost several cities, hundreds of cities and school districts across the state, millions of dollars in legal expenses. And by voluntarily making the switch to districts, the city avoids the threat of going to a lawsuit because having a by-district electoral system is a safe harbor under the California Voting Rights Act. Now, already, the City of Riverbank has adopted criteria and held quite a number of public forums throughout the city, as well as many meeting opportunities here at City Council to discuss and give feedback on the plans. I want to give particular thanks to Annabelle, Norma, and the rest of the city staff for organizing those events, making sure we had translators, snacks, and all sorts of services available. I do want to mention some of the outreach that we've done, including holding meetings on Saturdays in addition to evening meetings, as well as sending mailers home and placing notices in papers about these meetings. And so we also have a full tape of one of these public forums available online for people to watch if they want to, if they want to get the full presentation as well. So now, where do we go from here? Tonight is the second of three public hearings that are required by law. These plans, the first hearing was on the 27, or the 20, was the 24th. Tonight, we have the second one, and the next one will be on the 24th. These are required by law before the adoption of a plan by the council. The council is required to approve the final plan, and that's true for all general law cities. In addition, starting on next time, we're going to be introducing the ordinance that will lead to the adoption of these districts and formally make the change. There is new state law, basically, that governs this. There is new state law, basically, that governs this, that cities of under 100,000 would no longer have to submit this to the voters before making the change, but can do so directly. That law will take effect January 1st, so the effective date of the ordinance has to be after January 1st, so, which is why we're moving, which is why we're doing final approval of the ordinance on December 8th. This will result in no changes to the years of terms of the current members. So if you were elected in 2012, your term will still be up in 2016. If you were elected in 2014, your term will still be up in 2018. By state law, a change in electoral system has no effect on any current member still sitting, they still, they still serve their entire terms. And so those of you who are, those of you who will be up, and so, and so part of this process as we move forward is looking at which districts will be up in which years, and that'll be up to you to make a determination, perhaps in part based on where council members live, in order to keep districts on the same time schedule as they are now. And so, and so this will be rolled out over two, over two years. The first election's being held in November 2016, the second election's being held in November 2018. I just want to point out, if one of the members that's up in 2018 resigns in 2017, is the question we get asked all the time, the replacement would still come from the old district in which that member was elected in 2014. So even though there was already just elections held in districts, the replacement would come from the entire city, because that was the district that member was elected in. So that's a question we often get that I want to address. No, no effect on current terms. So now just refresh ourselves about the draft plans. Well, as I mentioned, we've conducted over six public hearings, plus we've gotten a number of comments. In fact, some of these numbers of comments are already a little out of date, because we've received additional feedback delivered in person, tonight even. But here we have a summary of the votes that we've gotten for each plan at the public hearings. Two votes for Plan A, three votes for Plan B2, no votes for Plan C, four votes for Plan D, four votes for Plan E, including one first-place vote, three votes for Plan F, 35 votes for Plan G, including eight first-place votes, and no votes for Plan H. Below that, we have a summary of some of the major comments we've received, including four comments were tested to liking the communities of interest in Plan G. One comment made by a person at our last public hearing talked about the fact that there's only one map that keeps the entire downtown area together, and that keeps it with areas that are across the railroad track on the other side, or west of the railroad as well, and there was no plan that kept downtown together with the community south of downtown. And then we've received actually now four comments about following the, the, the boundary line between Riverbank Unified and Sylvan Elementary in Plan G rather than the current plan which follows through the street. We have copies of all the maps here for you to look at today, including the demographics. I'm not going to go through each of the maps like I have before, because I think we're going to spend time looking at them later, but want to kind of just show you that we have all eight maps here for us to look at tonight, including some that are more vertically oriented, north and south, like A, B, and C, some that are more horizontally oriented across the city, such as D, E, and F. And these maps are just very graphics intensive, so it takes a little bit for each one to come up on the screen. In addition, we have a couple of plans, such as D and G, that create more of a central district on either side of the railroad track. And then Plan H, which is also one of the more vertically or horizontally divided plans. In addition, I just want to remind everyone that we continue to welcome your comments and suggestions. We have comment forms available tonight that you can be, also, you can write your comments and deliver them to the city clerk's office. We also look forward, hopefully, to hear from some of you at the November 24th public hearing as well. So thank you very much, and I look forward, and I'm here to answer any questions and provide any guidance I can as we go through, as we start now looking at what we're doing here tonight, kind of narrowing down the plans, winnowing these eight plans perhaps down to three or four, in order to focus the discussion a little bit better on the 20, on the next meeting.
Thank you. Any questions before we open it up? This is a public hearing. Any public comments?
I don't know either. Ramon Vermees from Riverbank, California, thank you. I don't know if the numbers have been corrected to 22,141 rather than 22,630. That was correct. But in the census, it makes a difference of 100 and something people. And of course, by the election time comes up, one vote is going to be making a difference for one candidate or another, let alone 100 and something that are going to be able to vote. Thank you.
My comments, I've made the same comments before, is, and I'm looking at Plan G right now, is a cutting off of downtown at Second Street, from Second Street to the tracks, from Patterson River, there's a lot of commercial in there, that's not all residential, that's not that big of an area. Downtown is historical district, now we've got that specific plan to deal with, and chopping us in half, that part off like that just doesn't make sense. I talked with the gentleman there at one of the other meetings, and he was working on his computer and found a way to do, to change it around, to put us back together like we're supposed to be downtown, but it's not here. And I will also, for the record, let you guys know, I was given a business card to call that, in DC, and I left two messages on an answering machine, and I never got a call back from them.
Any further public comment?
Good evening, Diana Gonzalez, 25, 54 Bradford Way. I like Plan G, and I think I attended most of the meetings with other residents, and I think Plan G fits what we're looking for, for representation and everything else. So if that helps any, with the minor adjustment in it. Okay, thank you.
Any further public comment? Close the public hearing. Looking at the representation, I look at Plan A, where you have 74% Hispanic, voting age population is 70, voting age is 56, voter registration is 58, and the turnout was 57%. And G has 53, 51, 66, 53, 58, and 56. And I know we're supposed to take a look at what the plans are supposed to do in accordance with the Voting Act. Plus, I agree that G does cut some of the downtown out. Both have, are within the school district in question. So we're supposed to narrow it down. I know with the, the numbers, G is one that I believe we should consider, and also like to consider A. Want to consider any additional?
Yeah, I would like to consider E and F.
E and F, okay.
A, G, E, and F would be the ones that I'd like to consider.
I'm in agreement with G.
Okay.
I'm in agreement with the four that Councilmember Jones Cruz indicated that we could narrow it down to at least.
I'm also in agreement with that.
Which one, the four?
I want Councilmember Jones Cruz to propose A, G.
But we have...
E, E, and F. A, E, F, and G.
A, E, F, G. Because those are the four that we'll consider at the next council meeting.
Just if I could, if I could just ask a question about G. Would you like to consider G as it stands, or would you like to move this triangle that's been mentioned in several public comments into G, or the change perhaps mentioned about the downtown area, or any of these other changes? It's up to you. I just want to make, make sure we're clear on what exactly we're considering.
I, if you're asking, I will tell you, I think G cuts off downtown, and I think if we are going to consider it, to leave the piece in there just like it is right here.
Okay.
Second, I got a re...
What would the, what would the proposed change be?
There were, there are two, there are two public comments, or two groups of public comments, I should say. Four people have commented on this triangle that is in the...
Right there.
Riverbank Unified, that is in District 2, in this plan. And then we heard the comments tonight, and I know she's spoken at other meetings about the, the part of downtown that's cut off from that one. I could, let me just, for clarification's sake, this change is very minor in terms of population, it has no effect on the demographics. There's actually about 700 people that live on the side of the tract, and that would require some shifting around. We did look at a perspective map at the last time, I let her tell me exactly where she would like to draw the lines, and we would be able to show that if you wanted.
But it, but it's a change for 700 people.
But it would be a much, it would be a more substantial change. This one, you could, is about 100 people versus 700 with this larger change.
Larger change affect any Voting Rights Act elements, as you recall?
Well, so it, it has, you know, it depends on the effects. When you get into 700 people, district, these are district, the purple district too would have to go somewhere else, and then the yellow district would probably have to come in for some else, and so, even though you probably, you know, so it would be a much more substantial change to look into. Between these two, yellow and purple districts, that's such a minor change, and neither of them has, you know, is, is a majority Latino district to start with. So I would just, that's, that would be my feedback about that, or my comments about that.
So you're saying that if we did make the change for the 100 and some people, it really wouldn't...
It wouldn't have an impact overall on the numbers, on the, the plan, it'd be a very minor, it wouldn't, yeah.
Add it or leave it, I'm sorry, I'm a little confused.
To move this triangle that's in the Riverbank Unified School District into the yellow district...
Doesn't, does not affect it.
Doesn't affect the overall numbers, it's about 130 people, and leaving it would be the same as it is now, the statistics would be identical.
How does it affect the deviation from ideal?
It does increase the deviation a little bit, but it would be with, it's under five, still under 5%, and it would be something you could say to keep the district along the school district boundaries if you chose to do it. Otherwise, we're following a major, a road right now.
Do we need a roll call vote? Councilmember Jones Cruz, would you make your recommendation again?
Yeah, I would like to make a recommendation that we narrow it down to four maps, A, E, F, and G.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion to consider A, E, F, G options in establishing district boundaries for elections.
That's leaving G the way it is. Leaving G the way it is.
And we have a second.
Councilmember Campbell.
Yes.
Jones Cruz.
Yes.
Tucker.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Item 5.4, conduct the first reading and introduction of an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Riverbank repealing its, in its entirety, Riverbank Municipal Code of Ordinances Title 11, Business Regulations, Chapter 123, Tobacco Sales Licensing Requirements, and substituting it with Chapter 123 Tobacco and E-Cigarette Sales Licensing Requirements.
Mayor members of the City Council, Donna Kenny will be presenting this report to you this evening.
Good evening, again, council members. As Jill has mentioned, this is concerning the regulation of e-cigarettes. They have become increasingly popular as an alternative to traditional tobacco products, and they are not currently regulated, even though there are concerns about their potential health impacts and their ability to create products with flavors and packaging that are attractive to minors. The proposed ordinance amends the municipal code to regulate citywide the sales of the e-cigarettes and the related products such as liquid nicotine, as it does traditional tobacco products. E-cigarette retailers will be required to obtain a city license to sell their products and to comply with all e-cigarette control laws, particularly laws prohibiting the sale of e-cigarette materials and products to minors. Licenses would be required to be displayed on-site, they would not be transferable, they may be suspended, terminated, or revoked for license violations, and an administrative fine will apply which may be appealed. If somebody has their license revoked, they would be prohibited from applying for a new license for one year. The pro, excuse me, proposed ordinance is consistent with the goals and policies of the land use and economic development elements of the general plan. The ordinance regarding e-cigarettes is not a project within the meaning of state SEQA guidelines, and it is recommended that the City Council introduce the ordinance for the first reading.
Thank you.
I'd be happy to answer any questions for you.
This is consistent with our Healthy Eating Act of Lifestyle, which was instituted or embraced by the city in 2010, and it continues on. So I think this is a good, good beginning to help curbing tobacco use. The, the fines that we have listed, are these the same fines that have a cigarette selling to a minor?
That is correct.
Any questions?
Thank you. Very well, Mayor.
Thank you. This is a public hearing?
Good evening, Ramon Vermees, again, Roselle Avenue in Riverbank, California. I'm questioning from all of you, how is it that you're going to get children with cancer, with respiratory disease, just as well as you get with the tobacco smoking or chewing tobacco, all those toxic stuff, and you're still trying to find out why you approve and why disapprove? Why don't they just approve it altogether now that you get the chance to not accept it anymore, and little by little be cutting off? In every corner, in every store, in gas stations, and they're selling them, and you still approved not too long ago, a few weeks ago, maybe two, three months ago, one more store? There is no need for this stuff, it's toxic, it's bad for your body. If you don't do it, you let other, other ones, somebody else hurt themselves. I had the chance to read about the fines that you have, first chance $100, second, second time that they violated $200, and the third time $500. Just put the first time $500, and next time you're out, it's not baseball. It is, it's a thing that you shouldn't have been doing in the first place, they shouldn't have known from the very beginning, they shouldn't have followed the rules at all times regardless, because they are poisoning people anyway, you're giving them that, that license to poison people, that's what you're doing. Philip Morris had a man on the researches for many years, and he got fired because he got into a talk with some teenagers from the high school around the Philip Morris place. And they decided to fire him because he told them all the truth and nothing but the truth. Nicotine messes up your whole body, not only your lungs, not only your respiratory tracts and all that stuff that, that is involved, goes to your brain. He told them exactly like that, and he was fired. Then we go... Then we go, why the fine of $500 until the third time? They hurt so many people in between already, and minors, because it's usually the fine for, because of violating or selling to minors. This first time fine, first time violation, $500. Second time violation, your license taken away. Never to be given again, never mind one year. They're going to come back and do it a different way. Simple as that. It has been proven. Again, please think of our health and that of our children, and that of your grandchildren, and that of your great-grandchildren, if you want, if you're still alive. But they won't be as healthy as we've been growing because of these silly laws. It's toxic. It's poisoned. Please don't approve anything. Start decreasing, rather. Thank you very much.
Any further public comment? So we just move on from there. There's no vote on this one. Will you?
There is a vote.
There is, okay.
A vote to introduce the ordinance.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to accept the ordinance as stated in item 5.4.
Second.
We have a motion to introduce the amendment and a second.
Councilmembers Campbell?
Yes.
Jones Cruz?
Yes.
Tucker?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Before we move on, I want to comment, or on your comments about the controlling. The state has done absolutely nothing. We're taking the first steps in trying to control the sale of e-cigarette products to minors. The state hasn't done that. So we're taking it in place of the state. The next step would be, I would prefer the total tobacco ban. Please don't print that. But I would like a total tobacco ban, at least on public sidewalks and in parks. But we haven't gotten there yet. But we are taking a look at it one step at a time, and we're doing it because the state has not had the ability to stand up to tobacco. Thank you, thank you for your inputs on that. New business, award a contract, item 6.1, award a contract to NHA Advisors LLC, an independent registered municipal advisor for financial advisory services in relations to the financing of the water meter project.
Mayor, members of the City Council, Mayor Sela Garcia, our Director of Finance, will be presenting this report tonight, which is connected to the presentation that was given at the beginning of the meeting.
Good evening, Mayor and City Councilmembers. As the City Manager mentioned, this is in relation to the presentation you received earlier this evening with regards to financing options available to the City of Riverbank for the financing of our water meter project. This contract would allow us to have NHA advisors act on our behalf in order to solicit bids, or if the City Council chooses to go the route of bonds, then we would go down that route. But at this point in time, we are requesting the approval of the contract. There is no budget implication associated with this, as funds have already been appropriated towards this project. But we do solicit your feedback on the option that you would like to select, should you allow me to sign the contract with NHA advisors. Staff is recommending a private placement, which although doesn't result in the lowest interest to the city, it does expedite the process for a project that we have all been working very hard towards. It would allow us to present to you a final financing package on December 8th and be fully funded before the end of the calendar year, and allowing the contractor to begin work as of January 1st.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
Question, if we went with the private financing, as you say, I understand that it's going to be quicker, about a month according to what he said, versus if we went with number three, it might be three months. What would be the difference? There's not a big difference in the time there to me for a project of this nature. My more concern is, do we save significantly that much more money if we wait and go with item three, take the extra couple of months, versus going with item one?
I think the initial estimate as provided in the presentation was a difference of about $12,000 in terms of debt service savings. So really, the difference wouldn't be that significant.
Overall, it wouldn't be that significant. Okay, thank you.
But timing is crucial on several levels. One most notable is, we haven't discussed, was the Federal Reserve Board meeting in December to raise interest rates.
Absolutely right.
So if we wait until they raise the interest rates, then we'll be a lot higher, no matter if we took the cheapest option.
I agree with you on that.
Okay, the second thing, too, is that the state may come on down and dictate a lot of other restrictions in our water use if we're not taking immediate actions. So I do like option two. It saves some, and it's more expedient, and we could probably lock in an interest rate at the beginning of negotiations prior to the Federal Reserve Board. So, but I haven't made a decision yet, because this is a public hearing. And if anyone from the public wishes to speak on item 6.1. Seeing that I bring it back.
When this was, Ramon Bermejo again, when this was brought in another City Council meeting, I remember making a comment, but I was never answered. How many workers are going to be out of their job because of these new meters?
There's none going to be out of a job. They'll have, be able to work in the field that they're supposed to be working, and that is repair of the water system in the older section of town. The beauty of this is that we'll have instant reading of meters that are installed. Now, I normally don't have conversations, but in this, you brought that up, and we answered that no one's going to be losing a job.
And then the other one, how many jobs will be added because of this?
None.
Modernistic thing?
None.
Then there won't be no impact on the labor force?
Not for this, there will be people installing it, but that's not the city.
And then the contract won't go to the city? The contract won't be nothing to do with the city workers?
Should not affect the city workers.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any further comment? Okay, I bring it back. Item 6.1, for comments or recommendation?
I'll make a motion, we approve item 6.1.
Wait, we need to make the termination of the option.
That's the option. Oh, well, the option, oh.
One is the quickest with the highest interest rate. B is the middle, with the middle interest rate, still quick. And the third one, we could be in jeopardy if we wait for the Reserve Board.
So we can go with the second one?
I'll second.
So we have a motion to approve item 6.1 using option two, and a second.
Councilmembers Campbell?
Yes.
Jones Cruz?
Yes.
Tucker?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
LRA, item 6.2, accept report on status of LRA budget for the first quarter fiscal year 2015-16.
Mayor, members of the City Council and members of the Local Redevelopment Authority, Melissa Holderway will be presenting the first quarter budget report for the Local Redevelopment Authority. And Debbie Olson, Executive Director, is also in the audience to address any questions you may have in regards to this.
Good evening, Chair and Authority members. Tonight I bring you the first quarter budget for 2015-16. It is going to be just the revenue expenditure reports that you see. Fund 197 revenue, that is our fund that is the leasehold revenue that is made on-site with the DOD caretaker revenue, utility revenue, and miscellaneous revenue along with the rents. I did put a little star asterisk there for the DOT caretaker revenue, because it was returned for correction. We did receive six checks from the Army Corps that were made out to the City of Riverside, and we couldn't cash them. So they've been returned to be resubmitted, which added about $49,000 to $64,000. I couldn't remember exactly what it was, but it was six checks for $8,223. Again, the utility revenue for the tenants, it is slow in getting in return because of the terms that we have with the tenants. So it is a 30 to 60-day return to get our funds for that. So we'll see more of that in the second quarter. The administrative expenditures for Fund 197, a majority of our administrative expenses are the 10% that we do pay through the OEA grant for leasehold revenue. That's why the figures are so, you know, lower than normal. Professional services, legal, we do get legal services through the OEA grant just for Cootock Rock. And then our legal for on-site, we have to procure that through some other means, and that is paid through legal, through Fund 197 as well. The other services is a contract that we have through OEA. And then the insurance premiums will be due more towards the end of the year. Fund 197 facility expenditures, those are our facility operations and maintenance. We did have a little higher fire suppression maintenance in this first quarter due to the five-year, the five-year that we had done in the last fiscal year, but there was a change order made. They missed a line, so we had to add that in. So there'll be a minor adjustment at mid-year, you'll see for that. Fund 198 is our OEA grant. That does supply our funding for our salaries, administrative expenses, and some professional services. It is on a reimbursement basis, so what we do accrue in the first quarter, we do get reimbursed back with a cash request that I do through the granting agency. The statement of revenue expenditures from July 1 through September 30, our total revenue that we received in the first quarter was $556,086. Total expenditures were $385,527, leaving us net revenue expenditures of $175,59. Any questions?
Why do you have a asterisk on the fire assessment fee?
Sorry?
Why do you have the star by the fire assessment fee?
That was, it was, it was something that I've cued to explain to you why it went over budget.
Any comments from the public? Okay, I'm looking, bring it back to the council for approval of the LRA budget for the first quarter fiscal year 2015-16.
I move that we approve item 6.2.
I'll second. We have a motion to approve in a second.
Councilmember, Authority members Campbell?
Yes.
Jones Cruz?
Yes.
Tucker?
Yes.
Vice Chair Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Chair O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Item 6.3, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Riverbank, California approving and authorizing the City Manager to execute a memorandum of understanding regarding the Stanislaus and the Twalomee Rivers Groundwater Basin Association.
Mayor, members of the City Council, Michael Riddell, our Public Works Superintendent, will provide an overview of the memorandum of understanding with the Groundwater Basin Association. This is an important component of our effort to meet the requirements of the Groundwater Sustainability Act.
Evening, Mayor, councilmembers. So basically, I'm here for you tonight to kind of give you a quick overview of what Stanislaus Twalomee Rivers Groundwater Basin Association is and what we do, and try saying that one really fast three times. So, and this group has, was formed in 1994, of which we've been a member of since its formation. And it consists of all of the entities that are up there. And all the local agencies are within the Modesto Subbasin, which is the groundwater basin that we're associated with. And basically, the group was formed to promote the coordination of the groundwater management and the planning and guidance and preservation and protection thereof. So this is kind of, this is a map that shows the subbasin itself and all of the entities that are involved in that subbasin. As you can see, City of Modesto is involved, Modesto Irrigation District, Oakdale Irrigation District, Oakdale, Riverbank, and also Stanislaus County is involved, and now the City of Waterford. So basically, what we've done in the last 20 years is that we basically have monthly meetings, and we get together as a group to try to figure out what we need to do to protect the subbasin prior to the work that's now being required by the state. So some of the things that they've done in the past is that, and is also recognized as the California statewide groundwater evaluation, elevation monitoring, or CASJAM. And then we've also, the work products that's been produced up to this point is the Integrated Regional Groundwater Management Plan, Recharge Characterization, United States Geological Survey, Hydrology Characterization of the Subbasin, USGS Assessing Suspectability to Contamination, and also a groundwater model. Now, basically, what we've done, all those things have been, we were able to accomplish all of that within the group via the Integrated Regional Groundwater Management Plan, which enabled us to get grants to do the work. So that's how the majority of the work has been paid for, through this group. So what we're doing now is, right, we're committed to the Groundwater Sustainability Agency, or the GSA, which is part of the Groundwater Sustainability Act. So they will be reaching out to other local agencies within the Modesto Subbasin. We have ongoing projects and a 2015 work plan. So our work plan will be to finish the USGS model, and that model could very well become the state's model for figuring out, drawdown and that type of thing within basins. We'll update and extend the MOU, which is what I'm here for tonight, to help the group become the representative for the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act in this area. And this develops the outreach material and the governance. So basically, the MOU, the Joint Power Authority, or contract, when we get to the point where we get to a GSA. So in essence, it puts this group and the City of Riverbank leaps and bounds ahead of most other jurisdictions when it comes to looking at the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act and also for the agencies. So it will be, give us a seat at the table right up front when we get to looking at these issues for this particular subbasin. So our recommendation is to authorize the City Manager to enter into the MOU. The MOU will run conceivably until the GSA takes effect, which we suspect by state mandate should be somewhere around 2017. So I would be happy to ask for any questions you may have.
Funding?
Currently, right now, the group has about $30,000 in the bank. And typically, if we can't secure grant money, then basically, the group asks everybody within the group to pony up money. At this point, if we have to come up with any immediate funds, then typically, I would take it out of our ONM fund.
And then what is your, you just had your budget review, so what is your budget for this year?
For, you're talking about for the Stanislaus Twalomee?
Yeah, that's what we're talking about, yes.
Yes, they, we currently have $30,000.
I know you have that in reserve. What do you spend each year?
It's really hard to pinpoint, Mayor. It just depends on what the group decides to do.
Okay.
At this point in time, they're wrapping up that model, and that model's already been paid for. And that's where the $30,000, what is left.
Basically, it's just time and material on your part getting to the meetings.
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct.
All right, you answered my question.
So that's the only commitment that we have right now as a city?
Yeah, that's the only commitment that we have currently is my time.
And what do you see in the future? Or do we know yet?
I think, obviously, this is, this is a great thing for us, because, like I said earlier, that we're leaps and bounds ahead of most other subbasins within the state of California. And because of the Sustainability Act, that puts us way ahead of the curve. So we will be able to be, to do what needs to be done without the state coming in and doing it for us, which we all know we would rather not see.
Just to add to Mr. Riddell's comments is that, in terms of a budget situation, we are required to meet the Groundwater Management Sustainability Act. And this is, will be a very cost-effective vehicle for us to be able to do that. So it is possible that we will need to come back to you for an appropriation of funds. But that appropriation of funds will probably be much less than it would be if we were out on our own. So this partnership, which has been in place for many years, will, is really positioned us well to meet those requirements. us well to meet those requirements in as cost-effective ways possible.
At the California League of Cities Conference, I attended the workshop that they were talking about the Groundwater Sustainability Act. And I fully support what we're doing here, and I, I would strongly urge the rest of the council to also. It really does put us in a position to meet all the criteria that we needed to.
Yeah, I mean, they, these groups got together back in 1994 and kind of seen their writing on the wall. Initially, it was that Integrated Groundwater Management Plan, which the feds required in order for you to apply for any kind of grant money. So, at that point in time, I think that's what initiated this group. But as it's grown over the years and what's come along with the water issues that this state has faced, and then obviously now even more so with the drought conditions and the, what they're doing with groundwater. One of the things, because we've been doing this for such a long time, this basin has been overseen for a number of years, so we don't see the issues in this sub-basin that a lot of basins are seeing within the state of California, because it has been managed for, for quite some time.
Thank you. This is a public meeting. Anyone from the public wish to comment on item 6.3? Seeing none, I bring it back for a recommendation or further discussion whether to, to approve and authorize the city manager to execute the memorandum of understanding regarding Stanislaus and Tuolumne River Groundwater Basin Association.
I'll move that we approve item 6.3.
I'll second it.
We have a motion to approve in a second on item 6.3.
Councilmembers Campbell?
Yes.
Jones Cruz?
Yes.
Tucker?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Item 6.4, potential downtown restaurant incentives.
Mayor members of the City Council, this is an item that has been part of our strategic planning discussions initially in March of 2015. An, an objective was set to explore restaurant incentives, and that's something that we have been doing over the course of the last couple of months. Donna Kenny, our Planning and Building Manager, will be presenting the report this evening. Maricela Garcia and Michael Riddell were actively involved in the discussions about what are some things that we might be able to do. So, all, all, all three of them will be involved in answering questions along with myself as we go through this process.
Good evening, I'm back. As Joe mentioned, this involves restaurant incentives, which is something you sorely need in, in the downtown. This was one of the city's three-year strategic goals, to retain and attract businesses. That staff would present for council consideration incentive programs. We conducted research and found four potential programs. The first is a grease interceptor loan program that has no interest or low-interest loans, assistance for 50 to 100% of the costs of purchase and installation, and it's on the first-come, first-served basis. The second is a conditional waiver to install grease interceptors program. It allows restaurants to open without installing the grease interceptor, but only if they meet certain terms and conditions. They must dispose of all food waste properly and not put it into the sinks. They must dry wipe all pots and pans before washing them. And they must collect the waste cooking oil and store it properly in recycling barrels or drums. A third is a retail and restaurant incentive program. It's to fill vacant properties and stimulate new construction by providing financial assistance in the form of a rent subsidy. This option is the, the least cost-effective of them and would require a sustainable funding source for this program. And fourth, Feet on the Street program, which is a no-cost-to-the-business evaluation by a part-time consultant provided by the city. That would help them identify their strengths and weaknesses, but it is similar to the Stanislaus Business Alliance, which offers similar services, and the city has directed existing and potential businesses to them for consultation. As I had mentioned, as part of the analysis, for number one, the funding source would need to be identified, but more restaurants would benefit as those loans are paid back and the money is re-appropriated. Number two, which would allow them to move forward on a waiver and not install the grease interceptor, does not require a funding source and could be used to attract the smaller restaurants. For number three, I mentioned it would require a sustainable funding source, or the program would have to be ended when resources are exhausted. And four is more likely to help existing restaurants, but as I mentioned, the Stanislaus Business Alliance is already providing some of those counseling to restaurants and other retail businesses. These plans are consistent with the general plan, in which the city will encourage the attraction of non-retail businesses that generate sales tax revenue. As I mentioned before, it is a goal of the strategic plan, or one of the strategic objectives that we discussed October 15th of this year. And it is recommended that the city council review this information and provide direction to staff to prepare an implementation plan that would utilize incentive number one, which is the loan program, and number two, which allows waiver program. I'd be happy to answer any questions. And I also have Maricela and Michael here too, if we have any questions.
On option number two, it says it's more to attack, to attract mom-and-pop type restaurants. So is option number one more conducive to, say, bringing in a bigger restaurant?
I believe so. The larger restaurants would have a little bit more cash flow and be able to pay back a loan, where with the smaller ones like the mom-and-pop, they may not have as much money to put out there. Sometimes we see restaurants trying to come in and they don't even have enough money to do some, you know, adequate signage, because they're really trying to get all their pieces in place. So I do believe the second one would benefit the smaller ones. It would help both, but I think so much more the smaller ones to get established and growing in the downtown.
Do you have any numbers as to how much of a savings the restaurants would, would, you know, be able to get if they were to go with either option one or two?
Option number two, perhaps Michael could let us know the cost of the interceptors? Thank you.
You're welcome. Evening. Typically, it would depend on size of restaurant, but you, you were talking around anywhere from $6,000 to $10,000 to put an interceptor, and that would depend on where it was located at, what you had to do to get it in the ground. So let's say, for instance, a store down in the area that had alley access, and it'd have to be installed in the alley, you'd have to go out and they would have to get a contractor to come in and cut the alley and install the tank and all that good stuff. So you could easily get up to $8,000 or $10,000 for an interceptor.
Just as the water plant guy, or the sewer plant guy, grease?
This is, and as Donna knows and Maricela knows, this is actually based on a model from Los, the City of Los Angeles and LA County Sanitation District, and they do these deferrals. And what it is, is you have the entity agree in this deferral that if they cause us an issue, in other words, if they cause a stoppage because of grease, then they will be required to put the interceptor in. So basically, the first time we had an issue with them, and nowadays with the, with the CCTV units that we have, we have it, it's easily for us to go in and find out exactly where that grease is coming from. So we can pinpoint exactly where it's at.
All right.
That, that answers my concern. I, I like number one, but I'm a little concerned about number two.
Well, I mean, when you make it clear to them, and basically they'll have, they'll be issued a permit that says it is a deferral, and in that permit, it'll state that the first time they cause us an issue, then they will be required to put that interceptor in. So it's an incentive for them to make sure that they don't put any grease down the line.
And that's without the, the loan?
That's correct. That would be just giving them the deferral so they don't have to put the interceptor in.
I do like your examples from the other cities, and it's easily read.
Yeah, it was.
Okay, thank you very much. This is a public hearing?
Here I am again, Ramon Bermudez. How will this affect the existing businesses, or the food businesses that we have? I don't want to give you examples, but you can imagine more, three, five, around this area downtown, in Scotland. The new, the new businesses will be benefited of getting a better break, but how the, the existing businesses get the benefit of this, or how are they affected by it?
Mayor members of the council, I'd be happy to address it at the end of the.
At the end, right. We'll address it at the end. Do you have any other questions or comments?
No, and the other one is of the, of the ones that are existing businesses and don't have, that, that, this requirement of the grease interceptor, will they be also, you know, those loans will be available for them if they don't, and they are in the need of that? Thank you.
Thank you. Any further public comment?
On the, the one with the loan, I think I read in there where it said that they're open for three years, the city will forgive the loan. Is that not a little bit like a gift of public funds, that they don't have to pay back?
We'll answer at the end.
The grease traps, are you going to be paying city staff to go around and check on all these new restaurants? And what's that gonna, gonna cost to make sure that they're doing what they're supposed to be doing? And I also agree with Mr. Bermudez's thing, the other restaurants outside the downtown, seems like if you do it for one, you have to do it for all. Isn't that gonna cause a little problem there? I don't know how much money the city is gonna pony up for this loan. I think I read $20,000 or something like that, considering that you just dumped a humongous raise on us, including the residents, for the water and sewer, and didn't have the funds to help the seniors and the ones that can't. And I know you talk about it, but, I mean, actions speak louder than words, I haven't seen you do anything about it, but that's what you told us, you didn't have the funds for it. Now you're coming up with funds now for business again.
Any further public comment? I bring it back to the staff for first one, affecting the existing businesses?
So, Mayor members of the city council, the, the objective is to try and encourage new businesses, new restaurants in particular, to look at the downtown. And so it would not benefit existing businesses, and that it would be a very limited opportunity. There are limited funds, and so it was specifically an incentive to try and encourage some reinvestment in the downtown.
If, if I might add to that, I can't.
The, the next one is the grease trap costs being forgiven after three years?
The, the idea of a loan program that we presented in general, the details of that we can put together. It was just an idea, again, to, to kind of talk about what, what that might look like. And as an incentive for a business that stays in business for three years, they might have a portion of that forgiven, and then maybe more if they stay in business a longer time. That was just thrown out there as an idea, it is not, nothing is set in stone. The, the primary purpose of tonight is to get some feedback as to whether or not the council is open to the two, the two ideas in particular related to the grease interceptors. In, in some ways, the money would only be spent if we had a restaurant that had all the other funding and can meet all the other requirements, including finding a business location in downtown. So it, it, it might almost be more of a marketing issue than anything else, because if somebody has everything else put together, with the exception of the money for a grease interceptor, they probably have a pretty good business plan. And that means they've also probably found, found a building to actually have their restaurant in. It's that one little piece that might make the difference for them between choosing Riverbank and someplace else. Maybe for going through the, the challenges of retrofitting an old, an old building. It would only be available to the downtown, it would be available on a very limited basis. Idea is, we're gonna, we would reward somebody who's willing to take a risk and be the first, the first, the first one in, or maybe one of the first couple in.
Thank you.
Well, if we talked about forgiving some of the loan, I just don't want to see us in the same situation that we have been asked with having to not have the funds come in. So it's, you know, I know it's a risk, but either way we go, I just don't want to.
The, the benefit of, of the grease strap interceptor is they can't take it with them. So when it's a loan, yes, but it is still city property, they can't take it with them. So if they should happen to fold, we're not out there. And if, if they're paying back the loan over a three-year period, you, you get, recoup some of the costs, but the benefit, depending on, on how successful the business is, the benefit is possibly more traction of other type businesses that will be complimentary to a restaurant, especially if it's a themed restaurant. I do understand the, the issue around providing it as either a grant or elimination of the loan, but, well, and we need to try something to get the Riverbank going. We spent $17 million to, to upgrade it, and now you can see more and more of the businesses leaving.
For me, I personally liked option number three best of all, but I, I fully understand the budget constraints of that. And I think a nice compromise would be to take a look at option two. I just, I kind of struggle a little bit with the loan thing. I, I think option two is kind of a compromise between them, myself.
I, I like both options. Depending on the type of restaurant coming on in, let's say it's a deli, which you have very little grease being generated, you could do, not have the grease strap interceptor, or you have a full-blown diner that has production of a lot of grease, which would be necessary. So it's, depends on what you have, what, I mean, it's, and if somebody comes in and it's a franchise, they have the money, they don't get the options, sort of. Is that, is that the idea?
I, I think that we can, we can set some parameters and, and if, if their direction is to move forward with developing a program, is we can work out those details. And we can even call it a pilot program and see, see if it works, see what kind of issues we have. And, and if it's working, great, if it's not, we can, we can always pull back.
Question, how did you arrive at a minimum of 30 hours a week for them to be open instead of something a little higher?
It's probably based, I'll, I'll, Donna, I'll let Donna.
It's based on the hours of downtown. Usually the, you're gonna be one or two days closed, right? And you're gonna be, whatever the, the restaurant times of eating are, let's say if it's a, a small delicatessen, it could be from 11 to 6.
Yes.
But if you have a full-fledged restaurant, it could be from 11 to 7.
Okay.
I mean, there's, it's, you, you want to open a minimum of a certain amount of time.
Right. I just wondered why it wasn't a little higher instead of lower, you know?
Because labor costs, being open, you have a lot of preparation beforehand, a lot of cleanup and preparation afterwards.
I know. I know what you're saying. Downtown's dead at times, I've been down here when it is.
All right. Is this just a general discussion direction? I, I like the options one and two, exploring it, coming on up, maybe even looking at some help from the alliance and see what, you know, they have in their pilot programs. See if you can steal some restaurants from Turlock, three or four of them.
Would love to. Absolutely love to. Their city managers retiring, maybe this is where we sneak in and grab them out and take them when they're not looking. So, so what we're looking for is direction, before we put the time and energy in putting in together agreements and something that we could actually market through the alliance and others, wanted to make sure that the council was, was on board with maybe doing either one or, one or both of these. one or, one or both of these.
I would be on board with the accountability that we could establish for option two, you know, that Mr. Riddell spoke about.
So you're for option two alone?
No, no, no. Both, both one and two. I just had some concerns about two.
I do, too, but, but he-
Those things.
He can put a camera up their wastewater area.
And I have issues with option one, so I prefer option two.
And when it comes for us to tear it apart, we can tear it apart if they present both options, but, okay? Do you have enough muddled guidance?
So I guess the question is, it-
Do you just want one option?
Which option, why don't we do this? Which option would you like us to start with? Because in the interest of staff time-
Option two.
Start with option two and go from there. Okay. That will be great.
Tony, you haven't said any, option two or one?
Oh, two is okay.
Okay.
We'll start there, and then we can revisit this-
It's more of an option.
Okay.
I can live with you also.
Great. Super. Thank you.
Okay, item 7.1, staff comments, please.
Mayor, Members of the City Council, I'd like Mr. Michael Riddell to start off staff comments tonight with the latest, the latest numbers in terms of how we are not meeting the state's water reduction targets, unfortunately.
Evening, Mayor. City Council. So basically, last month's numbers came out to a 6% reduction, and I can tell you off of historical numbers, as we get into the colder, wetter months, it's going to be even harder to meet the reduction numbers. Because historically, based on what the state wants us to do, in the month of November in 2013, the residential gallons per capita per day was 97 gallons. So if we had to reduce that number by 32%, on top of that, because you're talking about now just water mainly used within the household, it's going to be a pretty tough road to hoe. I think that the state has got a good grasp on the issues that were faced with that by comments that were made by board staff when we got up there and had a visit with them. But until we get that order from the state water board to see exactly what we're required, and I think, okay, maybe I should say, I hope, rather than I think, but I hope that what they will require us to do is what we've outlined about what we're already doing. So until we get that, we won't know that positively. But it will get, it will get much more difficult, because the numbers will drop drastically on the amount that the water that's used through November, December, and January. Questions?
No comment. We're not meeting it, and we have to, no matter what we want. I'd like a proposal of some sort at our next city council meeting, considering zero outdoor watering, with possibly hand-watering only, and not to consider lawn during the winter months. That would be one December through at least March. And that we take a look at the fines, starting not at $100 or whatever we have, but higher, for those in violation. Come up with a proposal of some way to get us down to those numbers. Because if we don't come up with a plan, the state will come to us and take over our water system, if one way or another, through directives. And I do not want the state in my back pocket.
No, sir, I agree.
The other thing, too, is that I have asked for a trend analysis for the last 10 years to find out why our numbers move all over the place.
Yes, sir. And I've actually already started working on that. I've actually gone through, I don't believe I'm going to be able to get you 10 years' worth, but I know I can get you at least seven years' worth of competent data. I don't know prior to that how competent the data is.
Okay, well, seven years at least, something that we can do some type of a trend on?
Yeah, I'm currently working on it, yeah.
Okay, because I don't want, they picked an arbitrary year.
They did, and there can be any number of anomalies that happen. You could have had a very light summer that year, which the heat wasn't as bad, and we've seen a few of those, type thing. It could be any number of things. I don't know how they arbitrarily came up with a 2013, and I have yet to find anybody that can tell me what they, how they came about that.
If we can, yeah, the reason why I want the trend analysis, go back as far as possible with accurate numbers, is that we can show that currently, over the historical trend, we are below at X percent. And I think that would be important. And I've also, eliminating outdoor water and except for hand, and you have to be present, something like that, in doing the water, you can't turn it on and leave, will help further reduce the water usage. Because as you say, in November, if we have to meet the 30% reduction, the 30, what is 32% reduction, we would be at 60 gallons a household per day, and that is just internal use.
Correct. And those numbers, you're talking about, the only household that would meet that would be somebody that was like myself, it's just me and my wife, and I'm gone all the time. So, you know, I can get through, by, we can get by on 50, 55 gallons a day, but a household that's got children involved, that's washing clothes and all that stuff, it's not going to happen. One other thing I would like to, also, this is not, doesn't have anything to do with water, this is now wastewater and the wastewater treatment plant and the energy efficiency project that's out there. We have now got all the bugs worked out. We have got all the aeration system working properly and with enough diffused air to accomplish what we set out to do. So shortly, we'll be closing that project out.
Good.
Fantastic.
Thank you.
And Donna Kenny, our Planning and Building Manager, has also got one more comment for the evening.
I would like to invite the citizens to consider becoming a planning commissioner. We still have a week left before our deadline for filing applications. We have three vacancies. You must be a Riverbank registered voter. It is a four-year term, beginning in January 2016, and lasts until December 2019. You get $100 compensation for each meeting, and applications are available online at riverbank.org and at the Administration Department counter. Thank you.
Thank you.
And that concludes staff comments this evening.
But council comments? Jones Cruz?
I don't have any. I've already said my piece this evening.
Thank you. Campbell?
Just want to share a water-saving device that I installed. I installed a hot water recycling system on top of my tank, and it's supposed to save anywhere from 25 to 35 gallons of water daily that would just go down the drain while the hot water heats up. It works. Cost me $190. The installation I did myself, if you had a plumber do it, might be a little bit more, but start figuring 25 to 35 gallons of extra water saved a day that's going down your drain getting hot, it might be worthwhile investment the way things are going.
Thank you. Our council member, Tucker?
I just want to say Happy Veterans Day to all of our veterans, and enjoyed, several of us served at the Veterans Luncheon that was sponsored by the Royal Neighbors last weekend, and thoroughly enjoyed that event as we always do, and just want to honor all of our veterans, so that's it.
Nice, Mayor.
I also want to thank all of our veterans for their service, and I'm really glad to see the rain, but if you need sandbags, they are available at our Public Works yard, and that's it.
Thank you. I just want to make a comment on the Historical Society today hosted, not a summit, but just a panel of eight mayors from the City of Riverbank. It was quite informative. I learned a lot from some who made decisions, why they made the decisions, so it was very informative. I believe they made a videotape. I don't know if it's going to be made available, or is it just archived?
Dr. Rick.
And then, but I want to just thank the Historical Society for putting that on. With that, we have item eight, which we are not going to do, which is closed session with the LRA item 8.1, Conferees of Legal Counsel, Existing Litigation. Since we're not going to hold it, it is on the agenda, it can be commented on. Is there anyone wishing to comment on item 8.1? Seeing none, we conclude this meeting. Thank you. Meeting is adjourned.